Okay, call this meeting to order. It is 5:03, I think. And we will go through our meeting opening procedures, including starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hope I can count some of our kids to lead us through. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Any changes? All in favor? Any opposed? Agenda is approved. We're going to review our norms. I'll go through the public speaking norm and then we'll hear about the governance team norm. The Kentfield School District highly values community engagement and welcomes participation during our board meetings. If you choose to speak, we urge you to treat each other with empathy, kindness, grace, respect, and most importantly, to assume goodwill with each other. Finally, in the interest of allowing everyone who wishes to be heard the opportunity to do so, we ask that you adhere to the speaking time designations and speak only once on any given topic. Raquel, tonight, what we're focusing on which goals?
Sorry, all three: finance, staffing, and the opportunity gap.
Excellent. Anything to report from closed session?
There are no actionable items to report from closed session.
Excellent. Is anyone here for public comment?
Don't see any hands up.
Anyone in the audience for public comment on items on the agenda? Okay. Consent items. Consent items. Looking for a motion to approve the consent items that are H?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Any changes or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Excellent. Consent items passed as we're... And the educational showcase, always the highlight of our meetings here. We're very pleased to have a fourth grade here with us today. And what are we going to be hearing about?
So let me get the presentation up and sharing the screen and... There. So I'll welcome our fourth grade team here today. Thank you, our grade level chairs, Denise Marshall and Victoria Denson. I'll hand it over to you ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening Superintendent Rose and KSC Board members. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Victoria Denson and this is Denise Marshall, and we are excited to share about some of the great learning that's happening in our fourth grade classrooms. So since our staff professional development days in both August and November, our team has been eager to add GLAD strategies into our curriculum. So some of us had already been adding a few of these strategies over the years, but we really haven't had the opportunity to really dive deep and add more of them and throughout the curriculum throughout the year. We have been able to utilize some collaborative grade level time as well as a workday we were fortunately fortunate to have together to help get this going. And one of those units, some of the strategies we worked on at that time and another time, we're going to showcase tonight. And we were also able to look forward into adding them into some of our other curriculum throughout the year. And we also hope, we are working on this mainly because of our SMARTA goal. I'm not sure how familiar you are with them, so I'm not going to go into details on that. But one of our SMARTA goals was to, or is to incorporate more GLAD strategies into our curriculum. And so we look forward to working on that even more. We're not, we're just starting. So at this point, you might be wondering what GLAD is. So GLAD stands for Guided Language Acquisition Design. Several years ago, much of the basic staff had the opportunity to participate in a multi-day training to learn how to incorporate GLAD strategies into the classroom. Fortunately, the entire fourth grade team has been trained at some point in our career, so we are all familiar. So of course, that's a way to start us off. Project GLAD is an instructional model incorporating research-based and highly effective instructional strategies, encouraging student interaction. Although GLAD was originally developed for English learners, it benefits all learners through the high-level thinking and academic language. There are multiple ways that we can incorporate GLAD. There's a lot of different strategies. And we're just going to highlight a couple of them for you tonight. So these strategies work well across the curriculum, and you're going to see that as we have blended our reading and science units together. Alright, so our current reading unit focuses on informational texts, and students are conducting small research projects. Fourth graders, they've been learning how to take notes as they read, find main ideas, learn about different subtopics, and synthesize that information from multiple texts. Initially, the unit actually was supposed to focus on weather. However, weather is not a fourth grade standard, so that's when it came in to incorporate it with our energy unit in science. So the current science unit in fourth grade, of course, focuses on energy. Several of the hands-on activities help students understand how energy is transferred in different ways. For example, they've used marbles in several different activities on ramps. They've also made chain reaction machines, which are a lot of fun. While discovering how energy is transferred, it naturally naturally leads to finding out the sources of energy, and that's where the connection to the reading came to life. So in science, our activities are focusing more on the transfer of energy, whereas the reading is focusing more on the energy sources.
So the first GLAD strategy that we introduced during our science unit is called the Cognitive Content Dictionary, the CCD, which is a mouthful. The CCD strategy engages the students in learning new academic vocabulary, and it helps it helps learn the new academic vocabulary. So in science, science is so rich with content, and so learning the key vocabulary is really essential to getting the kids to really understand those main key concepts. Instead of just giving the students at the beginning of a unit a list of vocabulary words that they learn and we teach them, they are involved in building the dictionary along with us, and the vocabulary words grow as the unit goes. So this is an example of a content dictionary in the process as we're going through the unit. The chart hangs in the classroom. It's very visual. It's a great reference for the students to turn and use that vocabulary. We often encourage the kids to use the vocabulary. You see them looking at it when they're talking in activities or they're explaining why something might work. Another key component of the cognitive content dictionary is that we ask the kids to engage in conversation using the vocabulary. So the students are asked to turn and talk. They're asked to access prior knowledge and make predictions of what the word might mean. As they learn more about the word, they're asked to make, put the word and use it in a sentence. And so the students are really involved in that, and they're doing a lot of turning and talking. And this technique really addresses the Collaborative English Language Development Standard, which states that students are engaging in information and ideas with others through oral collaboration discussion, collaborative discussions on a range of social and academic topics. So as you can see, this really lends itself to the students talking and using that high-level, rich vocabulary. Some classes even take it a step further and they add emotion to the vocabulary, so which helps, which helps just ingrain what that vocabulary means. So now we have Kate and Lulu here, and they are going to explain the cognitive content dictionary that they use within their classroom.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lulu.
And hi, my name is Kate.
This is our class's Science Vocabulary Chart, or CCD chart, and together we are going to explain how it works.
First, our teacher asks the students, how many of us has heard the word? Then she records it. Then she breaks apart the word and shows us how to say it, and then she goes over the parts of speech. After that, students turn and talk about what they think the word might mean. Then we get to share our predictions with the class. The teacher records one of our predictions.
Finally, oh wait, next, our teacher tells us the final meaning and gives examples. Finally, we talk about how to use it in a sentence, and our teacher records an example.
I really like the chart because it helps me learn the vocabulary. When we turn and talk during the mystery science lessons, I like to use the words.
I think it really helps to add on to Kate. It helps because if we need to think about it, we can look at the chart. That's our presentation.
Stop, girls. And, okay, so as Victoria mentioned earlier, during our science unit, we were really focusing on the transfer of energy. And in our reading units, we're really focusing on the energy forms and the energy sources. So one strategy that we use to really help engrain the content for that is something called adapted by the GLAD. It's an energy, I mean, it's a chant, a sound-off chant. And once again, the vocabulary here is very visible, and the repetition of the information really helps with retention. When we initially teach the sound-off chant, we go over each chunk of information, really connect it to what we're learning. Additionally, the song, as we sing it over and over again, it gets stuck in your head. And I don't know if you've ever heard those advertisement songs, the little jingles that get stuck in your head and you find yourself later singing it. I on multiple occasions have found myself singing this song and know the students must be doing the same. So again, that repetition of the information in a really fun, engaging way helps students really understand and learn this vocabulary. Additionally, this sound-off chant is beneficial because it's a call-and-response. And so this is beneficial because the words are heard first, and then the students repeat them. And so this really makes participation accessible for all our learners, regardless of their English proficiency or their reading ability. So I would like to invite Carson up, who's going to lead us and tell us a little bit more about the chant.
Hi, my name is Carson, and I'm going to lead us through a chant that we use in science. This chant is part of the GLAD Energy Unit created by Dee Bozwell and M. Wattman Turner. When we first learned this chant in my class, the teacher was the caller, and the class had the response. Class got so into it that we wanted to be the caller too. I'm going to be the caller. Feel free to join in with the students and the teachers as they respond. We just know because we've been told. Energy's worth its weight in gold. People use it every day. Sources help us work and play. Sound off. Sound off. Sound off. Chemical energies all around. Some of it lies underground. Once we use it, it is gone. If we don't conserve, it won't be long. Sound off. Sound off. Sound off. Other sources do abound. We just need to look around. Water, wind, and yes, the sun. Generate energy by the ton. Sound off. Sound off. Sound off.
As the teachers were talking about how, I just talked to a teacher today that said that she uses this as a body break, and now the kids have started marching to it and are so engaged in it, and they've started to add the movements. Didn't you say that today you were kind of leading us into some movements too? Can you share one movement that you do with one of the words? Remember one of them? Example of when you're singing the song, that they're actually doing some of the movements and adding that in is a wonderful body break. Thank you, Carson. I appreciate you being up here. All right, and then the next strategy, which is one of my favorite, and I think one of the students' favorites too, are the Super Scientist Awards. And the Super Scientist Awards really serve two purposes. One main benefit is it's a real behavior management tool that encourages students to actively listen. And then the second one is it's, as the theme has come across, it really reinforces the vocabulary. And so you'll see with such a simple tool, the students don't let a science lesson go by without saying, oh, we need to get the scouts out to do the science, the Super Scientist Award. So I have one student today, Blake is up here, to explain the Super Scientist Award.
I have one. Hi, my name is Blake, and I'm going to tell you about the Super Scientist Awards. In class, the teacher selects two to three scouts who are in charge of scouting out students who are demonstrating positive behavior based on our three different rules or principles. The three principles are... Throughout the lesson, the scouts have opportunities to hand out Super Scientist Awards to students they see doing those things. The Super Scientist Awards are slip-up paper that has a vocabulary word. A vocabulary word that we're using in our unit, a picture of that vocabulary word and its definition. Once the scout passes out an award, the student reads their award to the class, and we give that person a cheer. I think the awards help to inspire the students to have a better, to have better behavior during the lesson. For students who don't always make good choices, knowing that they could earn an award helps them act better.
I'm going to invite Blake. Would you like to be a scout for our, for the rest of our presentation? Will you scout out and watch people that are taking decisions?
See, it's such a simple thing, and it's amazing what the kids, the motivation for the kids that want a piece of paper that just has a vocabulary word. And so we read them, we celebrate them, and it's just a repetition of that same vocabulary over and over again, and the students love it.
We have one more, and this is when, Leah, if you're on, if you could raise your hand on the Zoom, and I'll talk while we find her. All right, so fourth graders, they do activities and experiments to help solidify their understanding of the concepts in science. So one activity that went along with several different lessons actually involved a track with marbles. The track was initially very simple. It only involved like one marble, and then a few more were added. And eventually, the track actually had some hills and involved several marbles, and then became kind of a mini roller coaster. So students were encouraged to continue to use the vocabulary from the CCD and other scientific words throughout the lessons as they explained what was happening with the marbles as they went down the track and tried to go over the hills. There was a big focus once again on more of the transfer of energy, but also we talked about stored or potential energy as well. And so Leah's going to explain the experiments. Don't forget to unmute Ms. Leah.
Okay. So, hi, my name is Leah, and I'm going to be talking about an experiment we did during our energy unit. We worked together with a partner to build a bumper coaster that involved hills. We used two marbles, and the goal was to get both marbles into the cup at the end of the track. We had to use what we knew about energy to figure out where to place the second marble. Would it work best if we put it in the valley on top of the hill, taller hill, or smaller hill closer to the cup? We discovered that if we put the second marble in the valley, both marbles would not make it to the end. Because there was too little energy, and when the marbles collided, the first marble transferred some of its energy to the second marble. But that was not enough for the second marble to get up the hill, because it did not get enough height energy.
Did you play the first example?
We needed to put the second marble on top of a hill. If we put the second marble on the hill, here's what will happen. Since the second marble got more height energy than the last one, it would be easier to get it in the goal. So first, the first marble goes down, and then it goes up. It collides into the second marble, but since the first one got some more height energy as it went up, then it could go down with the second marble.
It's a slow motion.
Some of the motion energy became sound energy when the marbles collided. We did a lot of different types of experiments, like this, that, were hard at first. It was a little bit tricky to meet the goal, but with practice, we figured it out. My favorite experiment was this one, when the goal was to get the marbles into the goal. Along the way, we learned more about energy and learned to use our vocabulary words when explaining what was happening.
All right, thank you, Leah.
Yes. I noticed all of the board members were showing respect. They were, they were listening very well and were, and were just showing respect.
Thank you. Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does one of you want to read your Special Scientist Award? Super Scientist, thank you.
I'll read mine. It says, "Energy," and it's got a picture of a trumpet and an electrical wall socket. It says, "The ability to make things move or change."
Fantastic. Thank you, and congratulations on earning your award. All right, so as you can tell, the students really blew us away on their knowledge they gained and how well-dated with all these activities and how well they can explain them and the concepts, and of course, our academic vocabulary. So we look forward to incorporating more GLAD strategies throughout our curriculum in the near future. Thank you.
Can I start? And then you, guys, that was absolutely amazing. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Lulu, Kate, Carson, Blake, Leah, Denise, Victoria, Marjorie, Katie, Nicole, and Maria. That was just phenomenal to see the integration of curriculum between science and literacy, to hear about all of the instructional strategies that engage students in a different way, promote student voice and responsibility, get kids moving around, taking ownership of their own learning, was really great to see and experience, and just feel super, super lucky to get to observe that, observe this. And also, you mentioned at the very beginning, that professional development that our team has engaged in. And so to continue to see that thread continue going, here we are in January, and still talking about that PD and the impact it's had in the culturally relevant teaching. You mentioned the jingle and that notion of what sticks in our heads, right? So I have a feeling you guys are going to always remember this lesson. And so thank you so much for being here. Thank you, parents, for your support, and thank you, teachers, for all of your hard work and collaboration on this. It's really great to see.
Yeah. I just wanted to add, from a teacher perspective, it's so great, from a board perspective, to see the professional development come to fruition in this way, or to materialize in this way, and to hear that all of the students, all the teachers in their career have had this teaching, just makes these kind of things possible, which is just great. And for the kids, it seems like you guys had some pretty much fun with this, right? What was your favorite, what was your favorite part of this, this class? Yeah.
I had a quick question. What was the, and I've heard about this, first of all, I did want to say, thank you for the, we've heard about GLAD forever. I feel like to actually see it in fruition is a special thing, I think, just because it really, it's different in theory and writing down versus actually seeing it come alive. So thank you for that and clarifying what it, and putting it in context. But for the kids, what is the, you mentioned this, I don't know who mentioned it, but the mystery science? Like, what does that relate to? Is that like a video you watch, or is that something you do? Got it. Okay. So you see videos about, it's not Mystery Doug, or is it different? Oh, it's Mystery Doug. Oh, it is Doug. Okay.
Doug comes once a week, Monday, and questions kids to ask questions.
Yeah, I've heard about Doug. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the awards. Do you guys want? People go back to... See you guys.
Do you guys want your slip?
Okay, that's really sweet.
Okay, now moving on to district reports. We have the employee organizations. KTA?
Good evening, everybody, to our Board of Trustees, and to Raquel, Andrew, and to those of you at home, including our site administration. You get conversation on me tonight. I was planning on being here originally, but at first, I just wanted to address the formality of our upcoming negotiations. As you would probably all be aware, we did sunshine as a organization. Kentfield Teachers Association has sunshine articles nine through 12, which are, I believe, in order, less-than-full-time employment, hours of employment, grievance, and employee transfer. We just feel like there's language that can be fixed or clarified there. I don't know that we're really asking for big things, so that gets me to... I'm old enough to remember. I'm 27 years in the district, and about 20 years ago, I was trying to figure out if I could nail it down to the exact year, and I can't. But our superintendent at the time was the impetus for us to transition to an interest-based bargaining model. And I don't know that most of you are completely familiar with that, but I'll summarize by saying that it really is a collaborative model where any interest is allowable, and it's about brainstorming and then prioritizing. But what I've always appreciated about that model and how it fits in our school district, which is two campuses where everybody knows everybody, and we all have relationships. Three of you are parents of mine from years past. We have deeper relationships than our formal relationships. And to sit at a negotiating table and to be a community, working towards common goals, has always been, in my mind, the perfect model. Now, since 20 years ago, we've transitioned and maybe let that go a little bit, but I think what I'm appealing to right now and what I want to represent from our negotiators and from our Kentfield teachers is a desire for collaboration and conversations with Raquel and... and conversations with Raquel and Heather Schreeder and Raquel and David Riedel along with Heather Snyder. I think we're all in agreement that that is our goal. It's the tone, it's the collaboration, and it's a mutual understanding and working hard to reach common goals and common ground. So that's where we're coming from. You've heard me speak a few times in the last six months also about rising cost of living. And I, I do want to beat that a little bit because, you know, in the last year, indicators are that cost of living and inflation have reached 5% and some indicators are closer to 6, even 7%. So it's getting more expensive. And while, while that's important for your teachers, and we do believe that salary and benefits really do promote or, or represent respect and honoring the hard work that our teachers do, we also do appreciate the importance of our district's solvency. So it's going to be tough, and I know that it's not an easy answer, and throwing numbers out aren't, they're not automatic. But I guess I just want to appeal to trying our best to reach those high goals. It's been a pretty tough week and a half. I want to shout out and honor and respect our front offices, Gretchen, your team and the Kent teams, also our site administration, who I know are all home in attendance, and to our teachers and to our classified staff and to you, Raquel. I feel like everybody is paddling up a really swift river right now. COVID has broken through. We have, our students are now getting sick, our student families, our teachers, our educators in general are getting sick, and our own children are getting sick. And so we're all feeling threatened there. So that's the context of where this is all happening. So I also want to just implore everybody, and I'm speaking for our negotiators on all sides, for forgiveness and patience. And just much appreciation for how hard everybody is working to do their best. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The Kentfield Education Support Professionals Association, or we like to be called KSPA, is looking forward to the next step in collaborating with and engaging with the district to create a rate agreement and to make sure that it's fair and equitable for all sides. Again, as I'd like to echo what Warren said, we know that things are tough and they're getting tougher. And we, we are looking forward to the opportunity to sit down and be creative with some of the things that we will be talking about in the coming weeks. Our classified staff is stretched very thin. This current viral wave has played no favorites. Members of the classified staff are dealing with positive cases both personally and in their families. But we continue to come to work every day as we are able. You won't find a more dedicated classified staff in, in the county. You just won't. We continue to show up, but did you know that very few classified positions are afforded substitutes? When one or more of our classified staff is absent, we don't have any options. We have to cover for one another as best we can. But if you're to walk onto our campuses at any time over this past week and a half, you'll see some very familiar places and some probably unfamiliar situations. But we are good. We stretch and we do whatever we're asked. That's who we are. We stretch so that we are able to be part of this district and provide a great level of continuity of education. Our flexibility and our innovation are the key to this. Among our classified staff, we do have members who have teaching credentials. And more often than I'd like to count, we have called upon these members to cover classes when we cannot secure substitutes. We're incredibly gifted to be able to have these classified staff members who have the ability to jump into those positions at a moment's notice. When that happens, we scramble to cover more places. But we are so fortunate to have these relationships with the teachers that it provides a seamless transition from having someone be a classified staff member to a certificated staff member for the day. And of course, that leaves our classified positions even more uncovered. So we have to stretch even more. Our maintenance level, our maintenance members also have to stretch. The list of things that we ask them to do to help keep our campuses clean and healthy grows daily. Yet they agree to our asks with these amazing and apt attitudes. They also cover for one another when one member is not able to work. They stretch and they flex and they take care of all of our sites. We are really stretched, really thin.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all of you and all your members for all your hard work. We know it's been tough out there. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the KIP and KSPTA presentations. I think we're looking for Kira and Deb Crudo, right?
Yep. Want to raise your hand, ladies? Are we wait, are?
We're a little early. We're about 20 minutes early.
Do we need to move to something else?
We could do, do your 3A.
My?
Opener.
Oh, the?
It seems like a mod, a nodule that we could deal with.
Yeah, we can, we can move and come back to, to that at 6 o'clock. Why don't I go ahead and do my report and then we can talk to them?
Okay.
And so let's see if I can give me one second here. So under general updates, I have a quick slide deck that I'm going to provide. But first, just to mention, the Kentfield School District, you've heard the KTA share that they were opening their articles nine through 12, as well as salary and benefits. And the Kentfield School District is opening Article 8, which is evaluation. So it's only one article. And we will be, as Warren mentioned, looking forward to working collaboratively and in harmony with our KTA representatives in negotiations this year. So before I go into the updates, I just want to take a moment and like acknowledge what Warren and Gretchen both touched on. It has been a really tough, last week was tough, you know, today's Tuesday. And I, and I think part of it is, obviously, we are in this surge with Omicron. But as they mentioned, our staff are showing up, they're showing up ready to support our students each and every day and being flexible and nimble. I was just kind of doing a calendar for myself. We got an update on December 29th. There were members of us participated in a webinar with Public Health, pushed out a communication on December 30th that changed again on December 31st, sent a communication on January 3rd that changed again on January 5th, that changed again on January 6th, but changed again on January 7th. So it's just a little sampling of the nimbleness that all of us are having to do, not just us in education and public health and the workforce out in the greater good. And so I want to just thank our staff for their, their just showing up each and every day. I texted or sent an email to folks beforehand, not knowing what our attendance would be today. But we can't have, we, we really don't want folks, you know, going out. So our administrative team is zooming in from home today because didn't want to compromise any of them. And I just want to acknowledge what they're doing on a day-to-day basis to support our children and to support the adults that they get to work with on those school sites, to see the things that we saw presented today from those fourth graders. So I just want to take that minute to acknowledge you all. I know you're out there in the virtual world, and thank you, our staff, thank you, our administrators, thank you to our parents for your support, and thank you to our students because they are still happy little plants coming to school each day, those I get to. But as I mentioned, this Omicron is hitting us hard. So with that said, I am going to pull up my presentation and share that here in just one sec. And it's brief, not a big presentation, but and then I will go back to our KSPTA and to KIP to have them share. So.
Just while you're doing that, Raquel, if I could, I think on behalf of the board, it's up, I'm able to say that we absolutely share your sentiments of support and, 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 and thanks and gratitude towards the hardworking staff, administration, and everybody who's helping make it a success. And you're right to call out the parents and the students. Everyone's flexing and stretching in different ways. So, yeah, thank you.
Including Raquel.
So some quick updates. So first, I want to start with Project Home Key. So there was a meeting with Supervisor Rice late, late last week, myself and President Riedel participated in. And I'm sure you'll give an update later, but just to note, there was a meeting last night giving information about homelessness here in Marin County. There'll be another meeting on the 18th. We still have not received official word from the state about where the status of the application is. We anticipate to hear information at the end of the month. It will be on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors. So just for folks to know, we're continuing in conversation. Nancy Vernon, Staff Supervisor Rice, is trying to set up a tour of the location. So just know that that will be forthcoming as well. College of Marin, some may recall that we talked, I feel like it was in November of last year about the purchase of the bank adjacent to Kent Middle School. And so that is what they're calling their Welcome Center, their registrar. They are planning to open that at the end of January. I don't know if their plans are changing. I've been in communication with one of their vice presidents about how that facility is going because we do have some concerns related to safety and kids coming and going from school. But they have been working with us. I just wanted that to be on people's radar. Budget update. Yesterday, the governor announced his draft proposal. Information's coming in. Devil's going to be in the details. We're going to have a work, I'm participating in a workshop with School Services of California next week, next Tuesday in Sacramento, to get some more updates. And there, there's also going to be a forum that the county office will be hosting with my client, head of FICMAT, Bruce Allen, who sits on the State Board. So more to come there. Our Subcommittee for the Finance Group will be coming together on Thursday to dig into our budget a little bit more. We're going to be looking at First Interim, as well as looking at some of the new initiatives, the school, the Food For All and Universal Transitional Kindergarten, the impacts that that has on us for funding. And again, the proposal that just came out is that, is a proposal. So it's not adopted yet. We'll also hear from the Legislative Analyst Office where they'll give more insight from what the governor's proposing. So just for people to be aware. I mentioned the new initiatives. UTK had another meeting today with our Subcommittee. I just have to say, that group of, not have to, I get to say, the group that I'm working with, it's been, they've been absolutely phenomenal, really digging into the approach that we want to implement and ready to present some information to our community. So as I've mentioned before, at the end of January, we're going to have some informational meetings. We're going to do an evening meeting as well as a morning meeting. I have a teacher that will participate with myself, and the principal will be there as well to do those presentations. We'll set it up in hybrid format so that people could zoom in if they so choose. They could be there in person. We'll do it over at Basic School. So we're just charging forward with that. We're going to post on our website probably tomorrow the dates of those meetings. And then I'll do a reminder on Thursday, my Thursday update. I'll also do some outreach to some of our local preschools and to some of our public preschool programs, Headstarts, California Street Preschool Programs that might be serving kids that live within our residence. So just so you have that. The school Food For All, Midge Hoffman, as you know, was our previous interim chief business official. She, Kirsten has officially stepped in, right? So as of January 1st, so she has joined, rejoined the team. Midge is going to continue to provide some supports, and this is one of the projects she will be working on. She did have a preliminary meeting last week, I want to say, with some members of KSPTA and administration, just to kind of talk about some of the initial thinking. A lot of it still to see what came out from the governor's budget related to kind of some of the planning there. So more to come on that. Public Health update, I'll touch on in just a moment. And then staffing enrollment, leaves and retirement, just for the board to be aware and the public to have. We are looking at, starting to look at enrollment numbers. We're going to open registration at the beginning of February and looking at our staffing pattern. As you may recall from First Interim Report from Midge, we're seeing ourselves flatline a bit. And so we're not seeing a big increase in enrollment or a decrease. We're also, per our contract, by February 1st is when staff need to notify myself if they plan to retire or if they would like to request a leave or if they're on leave, they need to let me know if they plan to come back. So all of that information is coming, coming forward. So just to have that, that's lots, lots of moving parts right now, for certain. Public Health update. So this here, this is a slide that I took from the update from Dr. Willis and Dr. Santora. Oh, goodness gracious. Sorry about that. Okay. So this year, this is a slide from the presentation that Dr. Willis and Dr. Santora provided, pre and post-holiday break. So just this new picture. So you can see there, December 17th, 38 cases per day, almost all were Delta. January 1st, 284 cases per day. Seven and a half times growth. So pretty significant for, for our community at large. Just for folks to have, we have been monitoring what's happening for us. And during the holiday break and what was reported into where we are right now, it's almost daily that we're sending out exposure notices to test and positive. But it's impacted over 100 members of our KSD school community in terms of students and staff. So that's pretty significant. We're not, we're not a lone soldier in that. This is what's happening across our county. It's happening across the state. So we're just doing what we are being told to do by our public health officers. Use your masks, keep vigilant, get boosted, you know, get the vaccination, all of those kinds of things. So just continuing to charge forward and show up for our kids each and every day. I did ask staff to present, I'm sorry, to submit their booster information. So we have 55 staff that have submitted today. So those are still coming in. I also posted on our website the vaccination percentages that we have, information from our community. So, you know, across our district, we're about 98% fully vaccinated. And, and that's the two vaccinations. So it's not counting the booster. And then related to students, for Kent, we're about 78% vaccination rate. And at Basic, 46% vaccination rate. And we're continuing to collect that information. We are pushing for it more and more. And I know there's more out there that have not been captured yet. So, so those are pretty good. So I just wanted people to have that information as well. In terms of schools and what we're doing, you're very familiar with this dashboard. I think I shared in a communication to the community, we did have one school-based transmission here in Kentfield School District. So just to know, we haven't had any more than that, been declared by Public Health. But we did have one, and that's not uncommon. That's happened across our county. We are continuing to keep our KSD COVID dashboard updated. So just know. And if you go in there, you can see that all the exposures that have happened this, during the course of this month, since we've been opened again. Rapid testing, we just picked up more shipments from the county office today. So both sites have been equipped with more tests. We have tests at the district office as well. So we're continuing to provide those, that we are being told to really be sure that we're maintaining tests for staff and to definitely give them out to families as well. Be sure that we keep some for staff because we don't want to not have staff so that they're here for kids to, to come to school. KN95 masks are double masks. So we have distributed KN95s to staff. Those that want them, reminding people to wear surgical with cloth overlay to double up. As I mentioned, vaccination and boosters. So I think I said 55 submissions today, still coming in. And Laurel, Dr. Nurse Laurel Yuren has been absolutely phenomenal, super responsive during the holiday break, during the weekends, quarantine, isolation, guiding people. And that, as I mentioned, it started December 29th, the 30th, the 1st, the 3rd, the 5th, the 6th, the 7th. And she's just staying up to date with how it's all changing and it's changing rapidly. So. So anyway, so that's just kind of a general update related to COVID. With that, I think I'm going to stop to share. Before we move to the principals, I do want to go back to KSPTA. So unless the board has any questions for me about some of those updates?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I was curious about the vaccination rates for students. And I haven't gone and like done any searching of other Marin districts. Do you have any sense of how that compares? Because I was kind of, it, I don't know, I was surprised that Basic was so low. Yeah, it's low. And so I was wondering if there was any like community, you know, outreach or looking into that more? If that's really matching the other, the other school districts, because it was just super surprising to me when I saw the numbers. Even Kent, even Kent, I was expecting the student numbers to be higher, but Basic was, you know, below 50%, right?
Yeah, 46%. So two things. So remember, people weren't fully vaccinated until December 6th, which was right before the break. And then we, so we didn't do a hard push for it until right before the holiday. And then I did another push last Thursday night. So I think part of it is, is educating people to submit it. And this is all the electronic submission. So Laurel is also receiving or the offices are receiving hard copies that have not yet been put into our accounts yet. So I think that number is definitely higher than what's showing here.
So that's what's reflected is really the who has reported and it might, we, we.
It's all self-reported to date. And so my plan is the first Monday of every month to update this chart. And so right now I'm just calibrating us, giving as much information as I can through our electronic means. Um, but we'll be doing more outreach to get more. I can definitely ask other colleagues like where they land. We can look at what sites and see.
Cause I was wondering, would a specific message be appropriate to push out to a family that hasn't submitted? Or are we not doing that? Cause it's different to see like, you know, if I read the newsletter and it just says submit your stuff. But if I get a personal message that says, you know, please report, you know, please report, that means like I myself am missing something that I need to report to the front office. And I'm going to take more action on that.
Yeah. And I, and that's a strategy that we utilize with our older kiddos. We just, we're just really now starting to push, which I anticipate that to be what we would do is sort through those that have reported, pull them out, those that haven't that are eligible, which we know it's everybody. And ask them, hey, we would really like you to submit this where they get a separate standalone message. And we did that for the elders, which I anticipate us to do for the younger. We just haven't, we haven't been collecting it long enough, but I feel like we're not ready to do that. I'll probably do it right before the February posting, if that makes sense.
Yeah. One other question. Um, I, when I listened to the health call, I don't know if I understood this incorrectly. Um, I thought that Matt Willis said that they're no longer tracking school-based transmission during this surge.
Um, that may be the case. I don't feel like I've heard that.
Okay.
I listened to the community one, and then I've been listening to the ones that I've made for school leaders, but so I don't feel like I heard that, but I could.
I don't know if I.
You know, but he could have.
I saw they said that they're no longer, because of the surge and it being really hard to identify now because there's so much exposure community-wise.
Yeah.
That which is too hard to identify if it's a school-based. Um, so they're still reporting on the numbers, but to say that you got it at school has become way too much of a tangled web, which makes sense, right? Because if everyone is like a contact all the time in the life that we're living right now, and all of the activities that kids do and both, you know, that it has become.
Yeah.
So that on their end, so I didn't know if we were making a different decision in KSD, but it sounded to me like from a county perspective, they were no longer going to like quantify something as a school-based transmission as of just like last week.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall hearing that, but that could very well be true. The transmission we had was prior to the break.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, so yeah, so I, I just don't know. I'd have to get clarification on that.
The reason I bring it up too is because when parents get a notification of like contact or things like that, that it would be helpful to put in perspective for people if that is indeed the case, that the county is no longer considering these, you know, school no longer tracking that it would make, I think, I don't know, broaden people's perspective too, that like school is a safe place. And it's not necessarily that if you're a contact or if you, you know, contracted COVID, that you didn't get it at school, even if there was someone in your class. Maybe they did, maybe they didn't. But so I just think that from like that, I don't know. Painting that, painting a more accurate picture of the context that we're in might be helpful.
Yeah. And some of the communication, so things changed so rapidly.
Yeah.
That even Dr. Centaur said that, you know, because of like the holiday and how things changed so quickly, they didn't have their communications.
Right.
Was, I mean, really challenged. Um, so, cause typically it's a form letter that we get from public health.
Right.
That they provided us that we use that template. And so it's just not, I don't think they've had the space to update it. We did adjust two documents that are on our website. One is the thirty-two point plan, um, the most recent one, which was released on Friday. Um, I think it was Friday or Thursday. Um, and then we also adjusted the living document of the isolation and quarantine. Because previously we had a PDF on there, but because it's literally being changed in real time, um, we thought it best to have the one that's directly connected to public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other questions?
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
You know, email to you about the dashboard, dashboard, the KSD dashboard. Um, so when I went to it, I saw like all the, you know, all the dates, like the weekly updates. But like, is there, are there actual numbers attached to, like, where do I go or where?
I did, we did input numbers on that. Yeah, we were just putting dates. Um, I went back and forth on that, but I ended up just putting dates because things were.
Cause it changes so much. Okay, God, yes. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's just states.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had two quick questions. Um, the, the subcommittee for finance, what is the charge of that commit, that subcommittee? Like what is the, um, like you mentioned, you, um, Universal TK, um, and what is it? How, I guess where I'm going with this is like, is part of the, the overview of what they're going to be doing is looking at the long term?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, the goal is really to look beyond just the three-year requirement.
Perfect.
Okay. It's really looking at a five, seven, ten.
That's great.
Um, and so that's our ultimate goal and really trying to dig in. And it's a subcommittee of the finance.
Right. No, that's perfect. I thought that was the original intent. And then when you mentioned something about UTK, I was like, oh, wait, is that going to be, has that been changed?
No.
Okay.
No, because that's a new program and it has an impact on our, on our finances, right? So that's why it's just trying to look at new initiatives, UTK and, um, the food for all are two new initiatives that are hitting us that we weren't. I mean, when you guys did your budget reduction a couple of years ago, that wasn't on the table.
Right, right. I mean. Exactly. Um, and then the other thing on the UTK, um, I'm just thinking of like when you drive through Fairfax or, um, in San and Selmo, how they have the big banners across when it's time for school registrations. Um, are we considering doing anything a little bit more formal? Okay.
Yeah, we actually.
They order the next door, using next door as well, just whatever.
We can definitely use next door. I think that, I do think that there's a KSD account, but I haven't gotten access to it. Somebody share that with me. But we did order banners, Spanish and English. Um, they before, right before the holiday break, they haven't come in yet. So we'll be posting those.
Great, okay.
Um, and, um, yeah, I just think it's trying to do as much as we can to push.
Yeah, I think it's important. Okay.
Just following up on that, perhaps a role for the community liaison as well.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're back on time at six o'clock. Okay. Uh, so KIC and KSPTA, if you want to raise your hands. It's up here on here now. Okay, there we are. Oh, look at the puppy. Um, looking to see if I.
Hi.
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 Hello.
Hey, Cara.
How's it going? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I don't get to see all you, all you guys. Uh, but yeah, so is the state of the world right now. Um, but thank you to everyone, the parents and the teachers, and especially the kids and everyone for continuing to make things, uh, function as, as well as they are, all things considered. And I'm going to report our numbers as of today. Our net number, uh, we have achieved so far is seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one with two hundred and ninety-six donors. And which is great. Uh, feeling great, feeling good about the year. We still have ways to go, but, uh, right now, uh, I feel like it's, it's a success. Um, and we, you know, like I said, we still have a ways to go. So I'll tell you about that and what we're going to do for sort of another push in the, in the next few weeks. Uh, we have a Super Bowl grade level participation challenge. If you may recall, last year we did March Madness. Um, this year we're starting a little earlier in the year. The Super Bowl grade level participation challenge will begin January twenty-fourth kickoff. And we're looking for some awesome grade level touchdowns. Actually, the, we're going to have a winning grade and that grade, we have some prizes. Um, we will let you know what those are as we, we're sort of working out the final details. You can find out all those details probably in the next week or so on our website. And then that will end February ninth, just in time for the real Super Bowl. Um, so look, we're looking forward to, uh, some increase in, in donations and all that. It'll be great. Um, we also have our auction. I know we told you guys about this in December, but Saturday, April thirtieth, our auction will be at Bimbo's three sixty-five in San Francisco. As of right now, we're full speed ahead. We're sort of very much hoping, of course, that this surge will be behind us sooner than later, but right now we're moving forward. We are looking for auction items. So if anyone is out there and listening to this or listening to the recording, you have something wonderful you'd like to, uh, donate. Um, we would love it. So you can get in touch with any of us, any KIC member and info, uh, contact infos on our website. Uh, kickschools.org. And lastly, this is nice and short, uh, we have nominations. Uh, we're, we're putting it together, a nominating committee. We are looking already for new board members and we'll announce our new board in, uh, April. But, uh, we're working on that in the next couple of months, and that's a really important process. And actually, if someone out there is interested, uh, you know, oftentimes it's, as you all know, this is really driven by who we know. But we, we did put a form out on our new website for anyone who's interested in being a part of the board. And if you go to our website, kickschools.org, and you go to the about kick dropdown, there is a, a, a page that's called kickboard. And at the bottom, there's a form. So, uh, and that will go directly to one of us and we will be in, in touch. Uh, that's all I have. So, um, and we look forward to continued success this year and, and getting closer to our, our goal.
That's great, Cara. Thank you very much for the hard work that you guys and the, and the board are putting, putting into that. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Deb.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Hope you're all staying healthy and well. Um, so as many of you are obviously aware, just given the situation, um, we've are asking for, um, as many volunteers as you might have time for to sign up, um, to help out with hot lunch at both campuses. Um, we've been a bit short-staffed with, with folks. Um, of course, being ill or quarantining and what have you. So we've been able to kind of get through, um, what looks like this week, but there are some days where we really have one volunteer. So this is my, um, soft plea to please sign up. We routed, uh, through the newsletter and on some, on our site and a note that's coming out through Parent Square to make it up, um, an easy one-click go to signup genius. And, um, we know a lot of you just got back recently from holiday. So folks might not have had the chance to kind of think about their schedule and sign up continuously throughout, you know, the spring and this next session. So we look forward to that. Um, signups are also up for this session for Jamba. Um, and we know the kids are looking forward to that. So that program, of course, continues on. And, um, I think Cara was mentioning at the tail end, um, participating in the boardship will be, we'll begin our nominating committee process over the next few weeks for those people that might be interested in becoming more involved with the, uh, the Parent Teacher Association. So folks will be reaching out to talk to others about that and taking recommendations. Um, upcoming, we do have some fantastic things that we're really looking forward to as, as we continue to peak and hopefully get through this period sooner rather than later. Um, we, we moved our, um, uh, general association meeting that was planned for next Monday in light of the holiday, we moved it to Wednesday, the nineteenth. We will have a guest speaker that evening who'll be talking to us about kind of optimizing fuel for our children for greater success largely through nutrition. So that's next Wednesday, um, at our regularly scheduled time between seven to eight-thirty, and she'll speak for about half an hour. The parent education series of topics relative to, um, the KSPTA have been posted and we'll have a guest speaker a month between now and throughout most of spring. Um, teams are well organized and looking forward to, uh, the Read-a-thon. Um, other big initiatives like the Maker Fair that will be during the day. So we're careful to not call it Maker Fair at evening. But for all the students to participate for that and, um, we'll keep in touch with you on other events just based upon safety for things like Bloom and, um, some subtle changes to Lunar New Year. So that's pretty much what's going on. We're, we're keeping ourselves busy and just moving us forward as much as we can with volunteer opportunities, um, in light of the, the guidance and the rules right now.
Great. Thank you, Deb. Thanks for all your hard work on this and a good, important call out for, uh, volunteers as, as possible for hot lunch and other opportunities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, I think now, um, we can move to the.
School space?
Yeah, so Mariann and Grant, if you want to raise your hands, then I can promote you to panelists. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi. So Mariann, you want to start?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I have to say, it's weird to be back at home again and not be able to see everyone. I, I feel like I want a camera on you guys so I can like really say hi. Um, and hello to everyone listening. Um, so of course, what's on everyone's mind in these first couple of weeks back from school, we're just trying to think of all the things that have been going on or the things coming up. And of course, COVID is, is strong in our minds. Um, but there's a lot of thanks to be said, um, for how our community is reacting to this latest surge and especially at school. And I know Gretchen mentioned it, um, in her talk, but I have to say that, um, it's just amazing how our, all our staff, teachers, classified staff, every, every single person on campus, how people have adjusted, um, to absences and changes in protocols and the dedication and care, uh, that they have for the students and for each other. And of course, flexibility, which I think we've said a thousand times in the last two years, but it still cannot be diminished in the amount of flexibility that all the staff is having to do different jobs and cover for each other and do without. And, um, so I'm always very just happy and proud to be uh, a part of the Basij community and the fact, uh, that everyone is just working so hard to pitch in and, and make it, keep everyone safe and still have the school functioning. And, uh, thanks to the parents for following the new protocols and, um, when they don't know, um, you know, we're talking to Laurel. She's amazing and that's just wonderful. And, um, again, our office staff, just everyone, just how everyone's pitching in and answering questions and helping everyone follow the protocols. And then, um, all our volunteers, I think to date, we have sixty-five parents at Basij who have filled out the form, uh, with their booster, showing that they've had a booster because we have so many volunteers for car line and for lunch. And then also, um, in some of our first kindergarten classes and, and the library and art for bears. So thank you for doing that. And, um, we have had to slow down our, uh, adding more volunteers, but, um, we still are happy to add essential volunteers as needed. And, um, so grateful to all the volunteers that quickly filled out the form for, uh, verifying their booster. So, um, you know, we're tomorrow, um, I have my principal chat and, uh, we'll talk more about how all the new COVID safety protocols are playing out at Basij, you know, from having to, you know, cancel assemblies to no Schaefer games for a while to, um, you know, mask wearing and things like that. So if anyone's interested in learning more about how these, what these protocol, new safety protocols are and the thirty-two point plan for Marin and, um, but how that's playing out at Basij, please join us tomorrow at, uh, nine-thirty and it's all over Zoom. And I sent a parent square reminder today. So the link is there. Um, so through all of this, of course, and as you saw tonight, um, you know, Basij is still focusing a lot on equity and inclusion and diversity and those, those themes, uh, throughout the school year. And, um, the fourth grade presentation was just awesome. And I was sort of sad I wasn't there to see the kids that were there, but, um, you know, just that our focus on GLAD strategies and those smart tag goals are just, you know, really impressive that, uh, it's always on the forefront of our teacher's mind, uh, the equity piece of, um, the equity lens on our, on our education. And coming up for our staff, we have several trainings. We have, um, actually our own Grant Alt House next week is doing our, um, training on, uh, complexity of gender for the whole staff and classified staff also. And, uh, we will have, we have disability awareness lined up, the training in that. Um, the culturally responsive teaching, uh, with Marcus Moore is, uh, coming up. And also we are focusing that, uh, focusing on that in our staff meeting tomorrow. So, uh, still keeping that at the forefront at, uh, Basij. And, uh, if you read my. And if you read my newsletter, we're doing, you know, different kinds of studies around Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that day, holidays coming up on Monday, Black History Month, and then the Thousand Cranes Project for celebrating peace and unity and understanding that we can all together. It would be really hard for one person to make a thousand cranes, but as a group at our school, we can make that happen. And so that's a program led by Marty Ross each year. And we end up with a thousand cranes linked together on display on campus. So that's really nice, too. Finally, just coming up, we have School Site Council next week. And we'll be reviewing our safety plan. And I have scheduled a lead room parent meeting that I get to join at the end of this month. So I'm excited to meet with my lead room parents. We were going to talk about more volunteering opportunities, but that's okay. That'll be definitely coming down the road. I have lots of faith with our group effort in this whole new COVID surge that working together, we can make it hit the other direction and be back to, back to our old COVID normal as soon as possible. So after Grant goes, I'm happy to answer any questions. And yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Marianne.
Thank you, Marianne. And thanks to all for carrying on with this meeting today. And it is different to be at home again, but it feels very temporary this time. Whereas the last expansive amount of time that we were doing this, it felt like it was never ending. So I'm hopeful that this is a short surge as everybody is predicting. And I'd like to echo the sentiments that many shared this evening about just the flexibility and the commitment of our teaching and instructional faculty as well as just the front office team and the custo crew and really everybody involved in the operation. I was reflecting with the Site Council today and Wendy Holmes had shared the same sentiment at the Site Council meeting. Even with the changing conditions, it still feels like a comprehensive middle school campus with all things open and accessible. If you go into any one of our classrooms, it wouldn't feel any different than it did in October and November when we really were kind of never, never forgetting about the pandemic and never forgetting about, you know, the importance of masks and whatnot, but otherwise just feeling like we're carrying on with school as usual. And so it still feels that way, even though from administrative side of things and a front office side of things, and then just a complexity of the consideration of our teachers and how things are playing out with more students at home than we've had for a while. It's complicated and yet our schools are open and in session. And we're all exceedingly thankful for that and committed to doing basically anything we can to ensure that that does not get interrupted this year. I'd like to share just a few COVID-related updates about some of the things that we're doing, you know, at Kent to mitigate the spread. But I actually want to start with something a lot more positive than that. The last school day of 2021, December 17th, we had actually our first full school gathering of the school year. And now we're not allowed to have full school gatherings. So it's a good thing we did it then. Sunny day, which was after many, many days of rain and it was our annual countdown court. And I have to say, it was the most incredible celebration. It ended with, we played one of the songs that students had been learning dance moves to in their dance unit, which we talked about last time. But in the closing minutes of 2021 at Kent, we played this song and all of the kids stood up and danced with their friends. There was so much joy and so much laughter and it was just a really incredible conclusion of a really complicated, you know, calendar year in our schools. And so that, I know that carried me into the break. And I think many, many students and staff members felt the same way. And even though we're starting 2022 in ways that we wish that we weren't, there still is an incredible amount of positivity and just optimism about what lies ahead and really hopeful that this may very well be the final surge and leading us to brighter times ahead. Speaking of, I think we're all aware of the different changes in the 32-point plan with masks, you know, required both indoors and outdoors. There are a few adjustments that we made, including, you know, closing our library, which just pains me every time Rebecca and I, you know, speak about this. It's, it really is the heartbeat of the school. But on any given lunchtime, we could have upwards of 150 kids circulating through the library. So for a temporary amount of time, we are not having the library open during recess and lunch and before school. You know, a great example of business as usual with very odd parameters would be after-school athletics. So we have basketball teams in each grade level that are rearing and ready to go and they're practicing. The games have been postponed. They're supposed to start this week. They're postponed to the week of January 24th. And, you know, the oddness is, you know, masks inside on the basketball court, masks for all spectators and only parents or guardians of players that are fully vaccinated and boosted can be in attendance. So it's just, you know, those layers of complexity that from the kids' experience, they still get to play. Unfortunately, their middle school friends can't come watch them play, but their parents and guardians can. So it's, it's just these sacrifices that make things feel different, but much more the same than in, you know, the last two years of this journey that we've been on. Moving on to more hopeful topics, you know, January 24th marks the end of the third hex semester at Kent. So last Friday, we talked quite a bit about our advisory program as a part of our Kent principal chat. And one of the things we'll be doing in advisory next week is having an academic check-in because the turn of the trimester really is an opportune time for students to check in halfway through the trimester in order to really ensure that they understand how they're progressing in their classes and expectations related to work completion. And so we're really trying to model for students how to stay up to date with their academics versus waiting till the end of the trimester where it may feel like way too much to address any sort of challenges with work completion or turning in assignments. So the end of the third hex semester also marks the halfway point in the school year, which is definitely something I typically like to just reflect about and all that's been accomplished thus far and all that we have lying ahead. I mentioned last time that we're prepared to welcome Dr. Lori Watson to lead SLAM. That's Student Leaders Anti-Racism Movement at Kent. We had a presentation that was given in all sixth and seventh grade classrooms to really encourage, this was Dr. Watson's recommendation, really encourage some of our younger kids to step into some leadership roles and carry us through kind of this year as well as their eighth grade year. So we have quite a few eighth grade students that are interested, but we're really promoting in some of the younger grades as well. We have 75 students who applied to be a part of our introductory SLAM group, which is far surpassing what we had expected, which is incredible. I mean, if you think about it, it's like well over 10%, really pushing on 15% of our student body that wants to take this leadership role around, you know, anti-racism at our school. And Dr. Lori Watson said she welcomes the large group. We've got some great staff advisors. And Wendy and I, you know, plan to contribute as well. And so we're forging ahead with SLAM. The first day is next Thursday, January 20th. So I can't wait to share some pictures and some images and some outcomes and some objectives of this work that we take on with our students. This week in our eighth grade classes, our counselors are delivering the SOS lessons. That's for signs of suicide. It's a very heavy topic to address in a meeting such as this and certainly with our students, but so incredibly critical to teach students how to advocate for themselves and their loved ones and their friends in times of really mental anguish and need. And so our counselors give students tools about how to act when they may be concerned about themselves or others that they're close to with regards to their mental health. And it's a really intense time, but also a time when great bonds are forged between, you know, our students and our counselors and just an understanding that there's so many important academic things we do at our school, but there's also a lot of really important social, emotional and mental health-related lessons for students to learn before they leave middle school, off into high school and beyond in their lives. And speaking of learning from our students, we have the Youth Truth coming up in the end of January, beginning of February. In fact, February is the full month of Youth Truth Survey Administration. And we really look forward to learning from our students, their perspective of what's working well and what elements that they are identifying that need to be improved at our school. And so I'm sure you're well aware, we'll also hear from our staffs as well as our entire parent community. And in a discussion about homework at our Site Council meeting today, one of our student representatives raised her hand and said, "I just, I'm hopeful that we can learn from the Youth Truth Survey to help inform our homework practices." And I thought, well, that's a very wise observation and it helps to reinforce why we use these survey tools to really ensure that we're learning from our kids' perspective to make good choices going forward. So with that, I'll go ahead and close and answer any questions that you may have for Marianne or myself.
Heather?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, I know it's been said so many times tonight, the gratitude. But I think what, Grant, you mentioned really hit home for me when you said, when you walk into a classroom, it really feels like things are still going on, you know? And that's really exciting because I think from a student perspective, I think most of students would say the same thing. I think we adults are really feeling, I think, the trauma of what's going on in terms of like this long-term. But I think kids are still, you know, very motivated and excited. I mean, and it's great to hear electors are continuing without stopping and all of the things that kids look forward to in school, sports, that's all a go. And so that's really encouraging and I'm happy that you highlighted that tonight because I think that was the message we're hearing from public health as well is that, you know, green light that schools are staying open and that we are learning to live with this right now. And so kudos to all of you for making that happen. So thank you again for that because that's, that was probably the best news I heard all night was that when you walk into a classroom, mask is still on, but student learning is still happening. So.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Heather.
Just further to that, if I could, I was so glad to hear the thousand cranes continuing. Those are these great Basit traditions that it's so great to see them continuing in this difficult time. And then also a recognition of still understanding the need for the disability awareness and the SOS and all the other important things that we do, you know? It's just important that we absorb what we can about COVID and continue to do the hard work that you guys are doing. So appreciation for recognizing that those things don't just go away in these environments. They're still very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Also, I want to echo what everyone said. It's so nice that school can be this safe place for students right now with so much chaos going around everywhere else. So I just feel really lucky to, you know, that my kids have a place to go that they're looking forward to every day. And it means so much right now. And it creates also that stability at home to know that, you know, they're being taken care of. And we so appreciate all of the amazing work that everybody's doing. A question I have a follow-up, Grant, when you talked about the advisory check-ins and the great, and checking in on grades, is there like a school-wide expectation around like what, how much teachers need to report on Aries? Like to keep up with like grade reporting or is it teacher by teacher? Or is there anything that like parents or students should expect when they check areas to be like checking up on how kids are doing?
That's a really good question and one that we've discussed periodically through grade level chair discussions as well as grade level teams. Our standard expectation as a school is updating in Aries specifically every, at least by every three weeks. Which I know is, feels that in some ways an arbitrary benchmark. And it, and it, and it should be noted that, you know, Google Classroom would be the reference point for individual daily assignments and tracking of that kind of work as far as like a manner in which teachers are giving assignments to students, particularly students that are on quarantine right now, by the way. But that Aries being the place to really check in on progress across a term. And so that, that three-week benchmark being kind of the longest amount of time that should pass before things are updated and refreshed within Aries.
Thank you.
Hey, no other questions, guys. Thank you both so much for your reports and for all that you do at the school sites to support our students and our staff. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're half an hour ahead. We would typically get a break right now.
Do you want to do discussion and action agenda and then we'll take a break after that and then do governance?
Sure, I'm good with that.
Okay. So moving on to the L section, Discussion Action Agenda. Calendar, L1, Action, Consider Their Approval of the amended Kentville School District Calendar for 2223 school year. Looking for motion?
Move to private.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes, I'm going to give some background. So some may recall that in November, we brought this forward. The board approved the calendar. And we did receive some feedback, some student feedback as well as community feedback a bit about the calendar we were adopting specifically about our end date as well as the November Thanksgiving break. And so took the feedback in, but then also monitored some data that came in this past year during the Thanksgiving break. There were over 200 students that were absent across both sites during the course of that week. And the impact that that has on instruction was a bit concerning. And so we also did some more calibration of looking at what's happening across our county. And we are, we are one of the, one of two districts that would not, would have been the only ones not taking that full week. So we talked about it with our administrative team, talked about it with our union leadership, and then recalibrated a calendar, which has us taking that November week off and then ending school on June 16th, which is a Friday versus ending it on a Wednesday. And so that's in front of you today for approval. One other thing that came up and some questions people asked is, you know, people are impacted for those that are working in the, in other sectors may not have that full week off. And so what about childcare for those? You know, we've got great partners in our community, Marin Enrichment, and as well as other community-based organizations that we could turn to to see if they want to operate some care programs on our campuses is something that we'll look into. So just to note that we are making note of that, that there may very well be children that need care during that week and if they're staying local and that we'll try to see if we can figure out some ways to support those. So it's in front of you for approval this evening.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to also acknowledge and to look back that we also received feedback from students around acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day in our calendar. So we just so appreciated getting, you know, these student essays and the board read every single one. And so I want to appreciate the students that contributed to that. And I just wanted to check in if we looped back with next steps around our response to the students and just to kind of remind everyone of where we were at. That was another feedback point that we received.
And I respond, yeah. So we discussed that at our last meeting and it was going to go back to our Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting. So that, our administrator sent a reminder out about that just last week, I feel like. And we can anticipate that to be on that agenda to talk about.
And the student, just the specific student that brought this forward did already get a response. And then I'm sure we'll get looped back into response, I think, for this one.
Okay, voting on L1A, approval of the calendar for next year, all in favor? Any opposed? L1A passes as written. On facilities, action, consider the ratification of the contract with Schneider Electric for a solar inverter replacement at Basit, amount not to exceed $33,000 as indicated. Looking for motion?
The move.
Discussion?
So what I want to share about this is, you may recall at the first interim report, Midge mentioned that we had received some electrical bills at the beginning of the year that were in the double digits. And through, it was a bit surprising. And what we learned is that there was a malfunction with our solar over at Basit. And so we did some research and working with Hall to identify who could come out to fix it. And there's only one, eight, one company that we could find because it's old equipment that was down in Southern California. And so we couldn't get multiple quotes on this. We had to go with the company that knew how to utilize, how to work with this solar specifically. So they came in, they fixed it. That's the amount that was charged. But just to know that, you know, we would have, that this will kind of, the cost benefit analysis on this will give back right away just because we need that to be working. Otherwise, our electrical building may have to be in the first double digits.
You know, on that question, I mean, this is probably more, this is predating me for sure as well. Is that, I remember that our district was one of the first in the state, if I remember correctly, to get solar. And so I'm saying that just because I think these are very old. And so I'm just curious, the fact that you just said that we had to find, go to Southern California to find that we had to find, go to Southern California to find someone to, um, look at this, I'm just wondering also with, I know that roof is potentially something in the future that we're going to be looking at. If, are we, um, also cognizant of the fact that we might want to get different solar on these?
Yeah, actually, that's on the agenda for that subcommittee, that facilities. One of the things is solar and one is the roof and knowing that, those are things that we need to be looking at.
Okay.
Okay, looking for a vote on L2A, ratifying the contract with Schneider Electric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? L2A passes as written. Uh, L3A, consider the approval of the request for inter-district transfer from the Kentville School District to the Miller Creek School District for the remainder of twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Discussion?
So this is somebody that's moved into our district, not attended our schools, has been attending Miller Creek School District. Um, wants to continue there. They're a seventh grade student and so it's before you for approval. And I have not been here where we've had a child transferring out. So that's uncommon. But our board policy does read that the board would approve any inter-district transfer in or out. So that's why it's important.
And staff is recommending approval.
Yes, yes.
The only clarification is it looks like they checked the box for eighth grade year as well. And I, just to clarify with them that we have to do it annually.
We'll let them know that this is annual and say, so, and the same thing with Miller Creek.
Right.
Okay, looking for a vote on L3A, approving this inter-district transfer from Kentville to Miller Creek. All those in favor? Any opposed? Uh, L3A passes as written, supported. Uh, we'll take our five-minute, five-minute break. No, no?
Well, do you guys want a break or?
Yep. Let's go ahead and do a, let's do a five-minute break and we will come back at uh, six forty. Did that uh?
Yes.
Yeah. Working its way down the line.
Okay.
That's right.
I've got a folder here for it.
We are, I think we're back.
Okay, we're back on item M.
Let me just make sure, if I could have, um, somebody in the, in the crowd just thumbs up that you can hear us. I just want to make sure that the mute is unmuted. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, item M, governance, uh, board meeting highlights. Yeah, that's the showcase and I think the tremendous efforts of keeping things as normal as possible on the, on the on the campuses.
Yes, yeah.
So, big gratitude to everybody. You want to make a plug for UTK or anything else in your highlights?
Or the, or the revised schedule for Thanksgiving week?
Or, yeah.
Yeah. Calendar's always. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe even in the newsletter, I don't know if you're planning some kind of wider distribution in the newsletter about the calendar, yeah, always like that's such a popular.
I'll try to be sure to link it on the Thursday update as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then future agenda items. Is there anything that's on people's mind in terms of future agenda items?
So I have a couple of things to just, uh, I think we should have a budget update. So some summary from whatever comes out from school services, a quick map. Um, I can work with Kirsten on that. Safety plans. So if you recall, by February, we have that and that's Wendy and Christine. Wendy, she's already doing her due diligence. Digging into that. So special thanks to Wendy. Um, the SARS will need to be coming forward for approval. They will be um, preliminarily posted by February first and um, I think there's an, another annual update related to LCAP or some of our um, COVID relief.
Okay. So safety plan, financial, budget and SARS.
Yeah. And when I say budget, it's like just the state budget, like what the state is announcing.
The two others that were sort of out there and just from like a while ago, um, was the data review. I know we talked about when we would look at that again. I just don't, I mean, given everything going on right now, I don't know when that would happen. But I, I know we said it was going to be iterative throughout the year. Um, and then the new map framework, I don't think there's anything new to update on that. That was what we discussed in our last meeting, I remember. But I feel like there, I don't think there has been anything new, right?
Yeah. So I would say the data could be combined with the annual update potentially. So it could be posted and then the math, I think what we talked about is to do a board workshop around that.
Right, right. That's right, yeah.
So I'll just circle back with the board about that.
Okay, moving on to reports from trustees, uh, Heather.
Okay, so nothing from the grades. I mean, I might not be getting invited for a little while, um, although it was great to see the fourth grade year today. Um, these are just a couple, the, just to let you all know that, um, I was asked to be part of the Street Smarts County Committee. Um, and it's just to look at, I don't even know if you're aware of this, like a while ago, this campaign. Because I feel like Mary Jane was part of that original one. That was sort of like a global Marin County, like you might have never seen the signs, that kind of awareness when you're driving, not to be um, reading texts or kind of like, and it's just global safety. So they're revising that committee across the county, um, for that effort. And the idea is to have something by the summer of a new, and it's probably going to be localized by town. I don't know what that really means, but I was also just come on from the school district perspective. Um, the only other ones I was going to update you guys was the um, public health update, which was another one Thursday. And amazingly, they're really like cranking them out. Um, I thought it was pretty worthwhile to listen to. Um, and then the one I really would encourage to listen to, um, is the Kent Principal Chat on social emotional learning. Um, that took place last Friday. I thought it was up there with like phenomenal, maybe, I mean, I always say this, these principal chats, but that one, I think, was my favorite. Just because it was so comprehensive. Um, and they really, I, the one that I thought was so interesting is they actually did a lesson of what it felt like to be a student, you know, kind of like a fifteen-minute, like it was on, you know, motivation to be in advisory. You know, we always hear about advisory. Um, just really, really informative, um, into what that our program looks like and to understand really the kind of a comprehensive level. Because I feel like we get board updates on it, but this was, was so, so interesting. So anyway, that was recorded. Um, and then as Raquel mentioned, um, there was the homelessness Marin did not mention anything about with intent, um, about the South Alicia Project, the one last night. It's still, it was recorded. Um, it's, it's fascinating just to understand, kind of like, if you want to understand from a philosophical level, why the approach they're doing of what they're doing, this um, I think it's interesting to understand that, um, and how Project Home Key fits into that model. Um, the first probably thirty minutes, then they opened it up to questions. Um, but the first thirty minutes, that presentation, I think would be worthwhile to watch as well. But anyway, that's it. No other committees?
I hope, Dovina?
I don't think I have anything new to report. Um, I did hear from the kindergarten team and I'm super excited to go see them, but it was right before the break.
I know.
And now that we're all back and we're dealing with Omicron, it feels like maybe I'm going to give them a little space. I was going to email them this week and just check back in, but I have a feeling it might be another, another couple of weeks before I, I get to see them in person with everything going on. But I'm looking forward to it and I don't think, with the break, I don't think I have any committee meetings. If I remember.
Yeah.
And Annie?
Same, I don't have anything to add for.
Okay. So, um, I did attend the Home Key, um, presentation that Nancy Vernon and Katie Rice's office facilitated. Uh, there was a interested group of, of parents there raising issues about the South Alicia project, a real focus on the, the population and the program, um, as well as some commentary about the, the location. Uh, the county has another one, is it the eighteenth at six o'clock, I believe, uh, about Home Key in particular. So the, for information about that, it did come out of the Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, this morning, but it's going to be more properly addressed. I think two weeks from now. At the county level. Um, J-LAC, there's been a lot of uh, information flowing today and yesterday about the, the budget. You know, education did make the top three list of the big concerns from Newsom. Uh, but the mechanics of Prop ninety-eight mean that a certain amount of that budget is set aside for K fourteen uh, education. So I think there was a hope that it would be elevated to top, top status, but it is still, there's still more money. And, and we'll hear more about that. On the math thing, I did reach out to CSBA, the California State School Boards Association to see if they had any guidance or resources or anything about that. They said they didn't.
Oh.
And I said, well, it might be something to put on your calendar. And then, um, uh, on finance, we're looking forward to meeting with them and, and Raquel already shared, it's sort of looking at that five, seven, ten-year thing.
Yeah.
Through the next partial tax and through all these new initiatives, what, what do things look like? You know, things like the roof and the solar and things like staffing levels and things like that are all things we need to better understand. Yeah. Any pertinent dates going forward?
Reminder. Holiday on next Monday.
Yep.
And then we, we have a bunch of committee meetings happening towards the end of January.
Okay.
So.
And then UTK meetings are going to be in January too, right?
Yes, yes. And we'll do some official announcements of that after tonight or tomorrow, starting tomorrow and then the Thursday update. So.
Okay, we, uh, debrief meeting in norms. Any observations from the board about the, the meeting tonight and how things went and how we could have done better or?
Need to be more ahead of schedule.
I know, David, it's way too efficient. I'm sorry, way too efficient. I'd like to see a little bit more bureaucracy, a little more stalling in between commentaries. No, it's excellent. It was excellent meeting.
I will say that, that I, um, I didn't say it at the same time because everyone was saying it, but I do appreciate, um, the general sentiment of appreciation and gratitude that we all showed for the, all the members of our community. I think to think about this current moment from a student perspective and to feel like our kids are still getting what they would normally quote-unquote get out of school while all the rest of us are frantically like hanging on to our last nerve. Um, I'm profoundly grateful and I, I appreciate that this board as a group, I think, really reiterated multiple times in multiple ways how grateful we are to everyone. So I'll just say it again, but I also appreciate the, um, the recognition by my fellow board members that everyone really, uh, called that out because I do think we're all just doing our best here, but it's it's been a long haul and it's been a long week and a half for everyone at the schools. The kids have been the beneficiaries of just ongoing excellent learning.
That's right. It's a good observation. And I thought the site updates were great. I love seeing the sort of acronym-heavy educational process, PD stuff.
A lot of strategies. That was pretty phenomenal.
Yes, yes. We've approved that so many different ways. We have a budget item thing, but we've never seen.
And to think that all of our, we're so lucky that all our entire fourth grade team trained in this really useful exercise.
Yeah.
And it's so good to put it in practice.
Right, yeah.
And you can see how it addresses visual learners and people with different language abilities and all kinds of things. And it really gets everyone up and engaged. So.
Yeah.
That was a highlight for me.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that we skipped over the governance team norms, so I'm not sure if we're going to be.
We didn't read them.
We didn't. I, well, I had T-Danny have to do it and then I, it didn't, it didn't appear on the list.
I didn't know if that was just a change and we're not going to read them out loud.
So I read the renewal, I, I read our speaking norms, but I did, and then I turned to district goals because I went.
I didn't mention it at the time. I thought maybe it's a new thing.
I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I think it usually says, of course, I think it's, of course, it is like sitting with COVID. I think it usually says governance team norms and the other ones. I think it does. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we've just been doing it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, who knows? Yeah. I know.
Noted.
She had to find something, David.
Alright guys, I think we had a great meeting. Although, and all of you, uh, adjourning to meet as of. Say it with me, Heather.
Oh my God.